Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City of Waukegan. November fifteenth, two thousand and ten, City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Figaroa.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest. Alderman Needham.
Present.
Alderman Larson.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
All present accounted for. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. Be seated, please. Well, tonight I have a few things that I'd like to share with you that are not of my own writing. These come from some additional sources, and I'll obviously mention them as I go through. The first thing I'd like to talk about real quickly is that the President signed the U.S. Council of Mayors Initiative Small Business Jobs Bill, and it's known as Small Business Jobs and Credit Act of two thousand and ten. And basically, it sets up thirty billion dollars in lending funding to improve small business access to credit and provides twelve billion in tax cuts to encourage small business growth. When fully implemented, the new law is expected to create five hundred thousand new small business jobs in local communities across the nation. Since small businesses provide the vast majority of jobs in our local communities, it is critically important that they receive the support they need to continue creating these jobs to help put our unemployed people back to work. Under the new law, the lending fund will be used to make loans to community banks with less than ten billion dollars in assets that provide loans to small businesses. As an incentive to get them to increase loans to small business, the interest rate that banks must pay back to the fund will be reduced to as low as one percent if banks increase the number of loans to small businesses by ten percent over last year's level. Tax cuts will also be increased to encourage small business growth. These include deductions that will allow small business owners to write off half of the cost of certain equipment purchased in two thousand and ten and the full cost of health insurance for themselves and family members. A more detailed fact sheet on the new law appears that I will be making available to my aldermen. This is something, the reason I'm reading this is I'm hoping that, I can't tell, is Dan here tonight? That the press will take, and I guess we, yeah, the press will take and publish so that local banks, and maybe even go to the local banks and ask what level of involvement do they intend in having in this program? Because we're having a real problem with local capital getting into the small business community, and it's something that we need to address, and it's something that obviously the City of Waukegan can't really do a great deal of. But if banks are willing to take part in this program, it is badly needed revenue to local business. So I'm asking all the banks in the City of Waukegan and in the surrounding areas, because I think the majority of our banks probably would qualify, to actively look at this and actively look at implementing this and helping small business to get the funding that it needs to not only retain people but to hire and to expand. The second issue I'd like to bring up is a, I'd like to read editorial that was in the Chicago Sun-Times. And basically, the headlining is "Police Fire Pensions Need a Legislative 911." On November second, voters in forty-four Illinois communities approved advisory referendums calling for meaningful public safety pension reform. We doubt many of those voters fully understood the issues behind the referendums, but if they did, we're guessing even more people would have voted for it. Pensions for police officers and firefighters are in trouble. If nothing is done, the next big crash site, police and, excuse me, if nothing is done, the next big crash site police officers and firefighters are summoned to may be that of their own retirement benefits. To prevent that, the legislature needs to act quickly. We think a two-tiered system that preserves benefits for current workers but lowers them for new hires is a big part of the answer. Last spring, faced with crushing pension obligations, the legislature created two-tier pensions for some public employees, but that reform excluded fire and police. Now, local officials from Chicago and across the state are looking to the legislature for help in making the police and fire pensions more manageable, too. In a meeting last month with the Chicago Sun-Times editorial board, Mayor Daley said the city will ask the General Assembly for police and fire pension reform in the veto session, which starts this week, I believe, if I remember correctly, or is it next Monday? Anyway, it's coming up quickly. Chicago's going to Springfield to ask for a two-tier pension fund. The pension funds are in a serious situation. Police and fire pensions outside of Chicago are in a serious situation, too, which includes, obviously, Waukegan. Statewide, the cost of police pensions increased from eighty-six million dollars in nineteen ninety-seven to two-hundred-and-fifteen million dollars in two thousand and eight. For firefighters, the cost went seventy, from seventy million in ninety-seven to one-hundred-and-seventy-six million in oh-eight. Under a proposal by a group of municipal officials called Pension Fairness for Illinois Communities, of which I'm a member and the City of Waukegan is a member as well, a two-tier system would lower but not slash benefits for new hires. Among proposed changes are raising the minimum retirement age for full benefits from fifty to sixty, raising the years of service for those full benefits from thirty to thirty-five, setting the maximum pension at seventy-two percent of final salary instead of seventy-five percent, and creating a new formula under which annual cost of living increases would be lower in some years. Police officers and firefighters deserve good pensions. Police officers contribute nine-point-nine-one percent of their pay to the pension system, and firefighters pay eight-point-four-five-five percent. They don't get social security, and the physical demands of their jobs means they can't work as long as people in white-collar professions. At the same time, even reduced public safety pensions would be far better than what most private sector workers get, and those are the people whose property taxes help pay for the pensions. Tenley Park Mayor Ed Zabrocki, who was helping to lead the reform effort, said an earlier effort to negotiate a deal with police or and fire unions failed because the unions insisted, quotation marks, on a draconian requirement that cash-strapped municipalities restore pensions to full funding before spending money on anything else. However, Mayor Zabrocki agreed there is merit in the union's insistence that a reform should include protections against pensions being continually underfunded, as has happened to pensions on the state and municipal level. The last thing I'd like to read comes from the latest issue of Crane's Chicago Business. It's a little bit longer, and I apologize for taking long. I'll try to edit some of this out as I go along, but these are things that are important for everybody to hear as we progress through the next month and a half to two months as the city begins to move forward with its financing, with its levies, and dealing with the exact problems that I'm referring to. The Illinois Policy Institute, a conservative think-tank, says Illinois' spending is out of control, with general funds operating expenditures leaping by nearly half between two thousand and two thousand and nine, adjusted for inflation. The Chicago Center for Tax and Budget Accountability, a research group that tends to lean in the opposite philosophical direction, says general fund spending actually declined five percent in inflation-adjusted terms between nineteen ninety-five and two thousand and eleven. Now, can both of these be right? The answer is yes, which ought to tell you something about the difficulty Illinois lawmakers will have this winter, perhaps in the legislature's January rump session, in filling the state's yawning fourteen-billion-dollar-plus-budget hole. The two sides, left and right, have two entirely different worldviews, shaped by what they count or don't count, when they do the counting, and whether they're willing to even consider tax hikes, hikes, spending cuts, or both. And with disagreement on basic facts like how much waste can be cut out of Medicaid or whether state workers are overpaid relative to their private sector peers, it will be damned hard to get anyone to make the tough decisions that must be made. Take, for instance, the claim that state workers are overpaid. Not in terms of their base pay, Lawrence Massal, president of the Civic Federation, which has its own stable of number crunchers, but in terms of benefits, particularly pensions, state workers are overcompensated because everyone now on the payroll can retire with full health benefits and pension at age sixty, and sometimes younger. That's why the Policy Institute and CDBA are both right and wrong. The bulk of the increase in spending has been for legally mandated pension payments, but because the state increasingly and municipalities have fallen behind in making payments on time, the amount it ultimately owes, as opposed to what it actually has paid, is rising pretty fast. Ergo, adjustment for, adjusted for inflation, state spending included what's owed in the pensions, and debt service increased twenty-eight percent between nineteen ninety-five and two thousand and eleven. And another statistic, and Mark Twain was right about lies, damned lies and statistics, but Illinoisans pay fourteen-point-seven percent of their total personal income to state and local governments, ranking the state's tax burden forty-fourth in America. That figure is based on federal data, and basically, it's been used to make the case that Illinois is undertaxed. But just looking at tax collections as opposed to taxes, fees, user charges, tolls, and other types of government income, Illinois ranks twenty-fourth in the amount collected. In other words, we're roughly in the middle, not inconsistent with the recent Tax Federation study that ranked our state's tax climate twenty-third. So every side has plenty of numbers and lots of fog to throw out, but none of that disguises the fact that Illinois, and I'm adding this, municipalities, are a billion short in an ever-deepening hole. I believe, and this again comes from the writer, so when I say "I," I mean the gentleman, Greg Hines, he believes the Republicans are right in saying you have to start with spending cuts. But some experts he's spoken with, like George Hovnack, a former deputy state budget director who specializes in healthcare funding, say GOP numbers about what can be sweated out of their prime target Medicaid are almost certainly too high and will only partially accrue to Illinois as opposed to the federal government's, bottom line. The writer agrees that further pension reforms, reforms that would apply to current workers, not just newly hired folks, are needed. But those reforms will be limited because the unions are right that Illinois hasn't paid what it has promised. That means other dramatic steps may be needed, like privatizing the University of Illinois and other state colleges, saving one-point-five billion a year, ending free retiree healthcare, if not pensions, and raising Illinois tolls, which have been frozen for decades. Then perish the thought, come the tax hikes. If Governor Pat Quinn will concede that Illinois has to pay all the old bills before it ramps up new spending, that is, it's pretty ugly and awfully confusing. But not doing anything except borrowing more will be ten times worse. And I'm sorry to have taken up so much time to read those, but when I came across those, I really thought they hit home for what we're facing. So, as I said, this will begin to play out over the next four to six weeks or a little bit longer, and we will be presenting to the community exactly the type of situation that the city is in, as I did last year in my State of the City address. No punches will be pulled, the truth will be told. I don't care how uncomfortable it makes anybody, but everything is going to be out there, and people are going to know exactly what's been going on and what lays for us in the future. We have our audience time. I know you gave me the sheet on it, Wayne. I've got it buried in here. Bear with me a second. First up is Ms. Rhonda Johnson. Rhonda, could you please come to the podium to speak? And if you would please give your home address and city.
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Johnson. I am the center manager for Telecrest Plasma Resources here in Waukegan at twenty-six-zero-nine West Grand Avenue. I come before you to-
Ms. Johnson, could you please give your residence address as well, too, please? We do ask for that.
Okay. I do not reside in the City of Waukegan. I currently reside in Zion, twenty-five-sixteen Jethro Avenue, Zion, Illinois. Okay. As I say that I do manage Telecrest Plasma Resources here in Waukegan, Illinois, we're located on Grand Avenue, twenty-six-zero-nine. I come today before everyone to basically tell you what we do, because I think a lot of people don't understand what we do, and we do do a lot for the community here in Waukegan and the surrounding cities here in the area in Lake County. Telecrest Plasma Resources is a plasma donating center. Pretty much, the donors that come through our center, they help save people lives. They, basically, we collect the plasma from them to, we use it to make different manufacturing products to treat patients with illnesses like blood disorders, immune deficiencies. We also make different vaccines such as hepatitis, tetanus, rabies, to name a few. Our company promises to provide innovative plasma treatments that save patients' lives and continue to bring the best technologies to development of these treatments. The Plasma Collection Center here in Waukegan, Illinois, helps maintain a reliable and safe supply of plasma to manufacture our products. The employees there also are very dedicated to the local community and committed to good business partnership in the Waukegan area. Our commitment to patient advocacy, education, and the donor's experience makes Telecrest, excuse me, makes Telecrest unique in its industry. We do appreciate all the support from everyone in the community and hope to engage many more citizens in Waukegan to donate plasma and help us improve the lives of thousands of peoples, excuse me, people around the world. Thank you again for allowing me this time to speak about what we do. Before I step down, I would like to have the Waukegan High School representative come up, if he doesn't mind. On October twentieth, we, of this year, we had an open house where we allowed everyone from the city to come down and just see what we do. We gave a good tour, and everyone got the opportunity to see my staff, which is about thirty-six full-time employees, and see our plasma center, which is, it's very nice, it's brand-new. We were originally located at twenty-seven-seventy Grand Avenue. So, to show our dedication to the community, what we decided to do was to present a check to the Waukegan High School for their track team. We were told that the track team were lacking some funds in regards to trying to get uniforms for their team, so on behalf of Telecrest, I would like to present the five-hundred-dollar check to the Waukegan High School track team.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Appreciate your, it's, tail Chris is largesse in this situation. I'm sure that the track team does, too, so thank you.
Representative Sam Taylor, the athletic director of Waukegan.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Okay. Next up would be Mary Clerjeakes, nineteen forty-four, Ash, Waukegan, Illinois. Please, silence in the peanut gallery over there, would you, huh?
Hi, everyone. As you know, I'm the president of Waukegan Main Street, and I'm here today because before we all see each other again, we're going to have, Waukegan Main Street has our Holiday Fest. It's December fourth. It's from noon until five-thirty PM, and it's up and down Genesee Street, and also at the library, Rhythm Dance Academy, gift seller, probably Natural Balance will have something, too, the massage therapy place. We just wanted to invite everybody to come. We're going to start Benny Plaza with some more's. So all of you who haven't, you know, didn't get any this summer because you didn't want to do a barbecue, go out and we'll give you some there. And it goes all the way down to the other end where we're going to have Hot Chocolate and Santa at Joplin's Java. CLC will have their Kwanzaa celebration also that day. One of the things we're trying to do with Waukegan Main Street is get all of the businesses, all the activities at the same time, so we kind of bring everybody downtown at the same time, kind of focus our energies in one spot. We're really glad that the city's going to be doing some holiday decoration, and we tried to follow up with that by sponsoring a window decorating contest for the businesses on Genesee Street. They weren't so excited at first, but when we told them that the grand prize was a Waukegan City business license, they're all like, hey, I can do that, hey! So that was a great idea, and so we'll be doing that. And then, so this is from noon until five-thirty. At five-thirty, we'll lighting on the tree, and Mayor Sabanjin will be there. He's going to read a story, probably at the Genesee Theater. And, Bob, I thought you really, Nadine said she heard from your secretary. No?
Life has intervened.
Life has intervened. We'll work out something. We'll work out something.
We'll find somebody.
Not to worry.
Yeah.
And then, at eight-thirty, there's going to be an after-party at Greentown Tavern, and at eight o'clock, we're going to, there'll be live music and food, and it'll be great. And at eight o'clock, we're going to pull our fifty-fifty raffle ticket, which we're selling now. We do have our license from the city, so that's good. Last year, we brought in, it was two thousand dollars was the pot, so the winner got about a thousand dollars. Tickets are five dollars, three for ten dollars. It's a deal. For five bucks, you can get all your Christmas spending money. So we hope that each of the aldermen come to Holiday Fest, buy some raffle tickets from us, enjoy yourselves, bring your kids. It should be a lot of fun. A lot of the businesses are going to have crafts for the kids to do, and we all look forward to seeing all the people who are going to be downtown on that day. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mary Claire.
Room to five-thirty, sir.
Okay, and, well, we appreciate everything that Main Street does, and Mary Claire, and all of the hard-working volunteers, and Violet, the director, executive, or is it executive director? What is your official title? Assistant Executive Director?
No, she's the executive director.
Okay, we like that. You know, I also neglected to mention one thing during my mayor's comments, and I apologize for this. That is to thank our police and fire for doing such a great job when we had the movie production company in Waukegan and making sure that everything ran smoothly, and Dave Motley worked himself literally into the ground over a couple of days to make this all possible and to bring a major motion picture into the City of Waukegan. While they only filmed a small amount here in town, they left extremely satisfied with the services that we provided. They said that the director will come back to Waukegan to work anytime and that the word will get out to the rest of the film production community in the United States that Waukegan is a good place to come and film. And it's something that the city has in the past encouraged. We're going to continue to encourage it, and we're going to continue to try to expand it, because while the director didn't stay in a Waukegan hotel, a lot of his staff did. So we were very happy that they did, and apparently, they ate downtown at Greentown and some other locations, if I remember right, and it was just, I have to say, I met them, and they were just a wonderful, down-to-earth bunch of people. They really were, so it was nice to have them. When you meet a guy who's got an Academy Award on his shelf, and you couldn't tell, he was just a really nice guy, and it was a nice thing was that he and I could talk technical stuff, having a background in photography like I do, we actually spent a few minutes talking about filmmaking, so that was kind of enjoyable. But again, my thanks go out to both the departments and to Dave Motley and to everybody else who took part in it. Okay, I would take a motion to accept the minutes of November first, two thousand and ten, regular meeting and executive session. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Conkin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have nothing under resolutions and proclamations at this point, okay? And I'm going to hand off right now to Corporation Counsel Newton-Finn. As some of you may remember in the past, we've used something called an omnibus agenda, which is where we group things into one, just a lump number of items and vote aye on them. We give the aldermen an opportunity to review it, but Corporation Counsel will kind of walk us through it again.
Okay, the first vote is whether to use the omnibus. Tonight, it must be unanimous, so on behalf of the chair, I'll entertain a motion to use the omnibus procedure tonight for various items on the agenda that will be specified.
We have a motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Now, roll call, please.
Alderman Figaroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
I would then ask each alderman to examine the agenda for tonight's meeting and to note for the record any item on that agenda that the aldermen would prefer be taken up individually.
And we should note that the items under communications are separate from this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do I hear any desire expressed to exclude items from the omnibus vote? Let me call your attention to item F under Public Works Committee. That would seem to require some flexibility in discussion, so I would urge one of you aldermen to exempt item F under Public Works from the omnibus.
So moved.
Alderman Rivera has asked that that be excluded, so we will hold that out for discussion.
Do we have any other item? Very well.
Okay, hearing none.
Second by who?
Pardon?
The second.
We haven't gotten there yet.
No, this is the whole, item out. Whole item out.
Right. And that's only, motion by Alderman Rivera.
Right.
Seconded by Alderman Moiseo.
Alderman Moiseo.
All in favor to hold out item F from the Public Works Committee report? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Can I explain it? It's really something simple. It's basically, on the agenda, there's some language that I think it should be important that, you know, we had discussed during our Public Works Committee, no less than, and then up to, is not on the agenda, and that's it. It's just a matter of clarification on the language, and that's it. So...
I understand that, Alderman. The only question I had, and the Public Works Department has, is we've got, we're rebidding that water main project.
Oh, yes.
And so we really do need guidance from the council tonight concerning what percentage to put in, if any, in this particular bid, and there's, I believe, another one going out very shortly. That's why I wanted to have some discussion tonight, to help me.
And it's not an actual action item. It's just really here for, for a, your leadership on this, so if, if we don't have disagreement with that item as presented, we will move forward, working under that until we reach a point where we can revisit this as an agenda item, or?
I would like to, I would like to address it this evening separately. Now, how we address it, you know, let's see, but we need to address it, I believe, separately tonight, in my opinion.
No, no, I, I thought we were very clear. I don't want to, I thought we were very clear, and Public Works, no less than, not to exceed thirty-three percent.
So if you're telling me, Alderman, that in your mind, it's already been decided that it's no less than ten, no more than thirty-three at this point?
At this point.
As a general, general rule?
Yeah, and, and for, Alderman, I'm sorry, and it's, I know it says local residents. I prefer to say Waukegan residents.
That was the problem.
Because it should be Waukegan. And, and, and just, I don't know if we want to discuss it now, but I noticed it says up to, what we did say for this year and to exceed, look at other years. Okay. Other than that, I was, I thought it was pretty much agreed upon.
Okay, Alderman Moiseo?
I don't, I think we took the ceiling off. I mean, with ten, ten percent, what if they got a hundred percent? You can't have the job?
Yeah, still get the job.
But I think we took, I think we took the ceiling off. I think we said ten percent. Why have ten to thirty? Ten percent was the low end. We didn't, if somebody's got a hundred percent employees from Waukegan, we're not going to give them the job? That didn't, and then we, we said in the committee, I thought we took, we said, why have thirty percent? Just take it off. Am I right?
Committee's mentioned, why take it off, but I don't think we did.
Okay. I'm just saying, why, I think we just get rid of the ceiling. Take the ceiling off, leave the minimum.
Yes, we did talk about that, and it does make a lot of sense.
Lead.
Yeah.
At least about two-thirds.
No less than ten percent.
Yeah, that's it. You don't-
With no...
You don't need a ceiling.
No ceiling cap on it.
Yes, you do. You got to have a ceiling. You do not... When you tell somebody 5, they gonna give you 5s.
No, 10 is the bottom.
I understand that. If you tell them 10, that's all they gonna give you. You must have the parameters. The parameters is... The reason we put 10 percent in there is so we can have some flexibility when people come in here. But you can't lay up here and tell me, "If it's 10, they gonna give you 10." If it's in our ordinance, they gonna... Then they can stipulate to our ordinance. So a minimum of 10, not to exceed 33 percent.
Why not not to exceed 100 percent?
If that's what you... I would love that, but I would love that, however, I'm just saying, those were the...
Well, if you want to put a number, then just say, "No less than 10 percent, up to 100 percent."
Could I interject?
That's what I mean by the ceiling.
Right. When the specifications go out to rebid the Watermain project and the next project, I believe there's two in the pipeline, those specifications have to be very clear to the potential bidder, as to what needs to be done to satisfy our local hiring ordinance. As it now sits, that's 33 percent. Okay? The council has the power, under that ordinance, to reduce that percentage, to waive it altogether for particular projects or a particular period of time. The council retains that power always. In light of the two projects about to go out, the Public Works Director and the rest of us need to know whether the council wants to reduce this to 10 percent for these two bids, at least, coming up.
Right.
Or whether we want a higher percentage. We can't... If you give a range, that's going to confuse the potential bidder. And then, we might want to say, "Well, if somebody offers us a higher percentage, we're gonna favor that bidder, and that brings us into some legal issues." But I think we need to set a percentage for these next two bids about to go out, so that everybody's on the same page. That's why I'm saying it. If 10 percent is the number, we need to motion, on behalf of the chair, I entertain a motion that we have a 10 percent local hiring requirement on the next couple of bids. Tom, we got two in the hopper?
One for sure, one for... Just a little bit of a bookie going out.
Okay, next. And they are the Watermain project we're rebidding?
Two off, one rebid, one estimated for a job.
Well, we all agree to 10 percent.
Then, we need...
And no less than 10 percent.
If my memory serves me correct, sometimes that's suspect. But I think the committee, I think we said 10 percent.
Right.
There was some discussion about, "Why would you have a ceiling? If somebody's got 100 percent, we're not gonna give them the job?"
And we were gonna do this for up to a year, and then revisit it to see, you know, how this goes.
Right.
So, you know, sitting up here now, discussing it, after we've even discussed it in Public Works, let's make a decision here. We all agree on no less than 10 percent.
Alderman Conken?
I think that's... You were confusing the issue. I think the issue is, we all agree that we want at least 10 percent of local people being hired for any project. The question, like Alderman Moiseo says, if we got 100 people being hired for a job, we're telling you can't hire any more than 33 people from Waukegan? So, no, the minimum should be 10. I don't see why there's a ceiling at all.
Well, they... I think part of what... This is kind of getting into this wordsmithing thing. Part of it is that what the language might need on there is, if you wanted to keep that 33 percent, or whatever it might be, what you need in there is language that the city council, or the sitting committee that's reviewing the contract, will decide, at the time of approval, what the percentage should be. Let's think about it. If you say 10 percent, that's your minimum, you're gonna have at least 10 percent. I think Sam does make some sense when he says, "That's all they'll do." But if you say 10 to 33 percent, it doesn't make them do any more than 10 percent anyway.
Right.
So, I mean, we're at a point here where I think we're kind of arguing about a number that doesn't have any play here. The 33 percent, if we're not willing to put language that says the council will set forth the percentage for each contract, within a 10 to 33 percent range, it's gonna be difficult for us to get business done.
May I suggest, this was really a discussion item this evening? We're asking for guidance. We do have a special city council meeting this Thursday.
Right.
And I suggest that we add an action item concerning this on that agenda, so we can actually have a vote that night as to whether to reduce it to 10 percent, or whatever the council determines for these next two bids.
Alderman Needham?
Just if you could refresh my memory on the language and the ordinance, how are we gonna prove up with the bidders their local hiring? Are we gonna certify payroll, or... And who's gonna track that?
The present concept is that a notice would go out at the front of every bid packet from Corporation Council. That notice would include a copy of the local hiring ordinance. The notice would basically say that this has been passed. Presently, if we reduce it, I'll tell them what the percentage is that's been changed for this particular bid. And then, the statement, "If you're unable or unwilling to comply with this 10 percent requirement," or whatever it may be, "Don't bid." Because any bid you make after this notice is considered to be an agreement to comply with it. So if you don't want to comply with the ordinance, don't bid. Now, how it's supervised once a project starts is, I think, monthly, the contractor has to give the city a list of the workers on the project, their addresses. It won't be terribly hard, because of the paperwork that these projects generate, I think, for us to determine whether or not the ordinance is being complied with. So that would be the enforcement mechanism, or at least the monitoring mechanism, is sort of built into the paperwork already. And if we have a situation where a contractor does not comply, they'll come back before the council.
And while that's all well and good, but who's gonna monitor that? Who's gonna write hurt on that? Who's gonna make sure, when the bids go out and they're awarded, and the job's started, that those people are actually working on those jobs?
And I agree with that, Alderman Needham. I said that's one of the things that I've been kind of wondering about. We did a little research into the contracts and obligations and that sort of thing under state statute, and there are certain things that companies that do use municipal and state revenues have to prove certain employment standards that they meet. We might be able to require it in that, but it will take someone to review it. And not only review it, but call the individual to make sure and confirm that they are on the job. Because getting the paperwork from the business is not gonna be sufficient. We are going to have to be able to confirm with the individual that they are working. Because you could have a firm that could meet these specs right at the start of a job, and peel those numbers off, and replace people, just so they can get in. So we are gonna... There's gonna have to be monitor. Who's gonna do it?
Who monitors the bid processing now, when it comes in?
Well, Tom. He monitors it, but...
County, it's the city clerk, who is all paperwork that comes in. Bids come to the city clerk. He's the...
And I know Wayne just can't wait to get more paperwork dumped on him. Alderman Moiseo?
I hate to be a fly in the ointment, but we talked about this in committee with the firm that bids, and they got Waukegan guys working, but they don't have any Waukegan guys, or they don't have the 10 percent working on that specific job. But he has... He's got 50 percent people in Waukegan working, but they don't have that certain skill set. They gotta go somewhere else. I mean, there's a lot of... This is a spider web that becomes very difficult to do. And the other thing to keep in mind, the last time we bid this, not one person met the standard. Not one bidder met the standard.
Not the 30 percent.
At that time, it was 40.
No, those guys... People still bid it, but they didn't have... They weren't gonna meet it anyway.
When it went out, it's 40 percent.
Right, I know that.
Well, we did have, and I'm... We did have, if I remember correctly, one, but it wasn't the lowest bidder.
The answers often were to be determined. And the problem with that is, are they determining whether to comply with the ordinance, or are they determining how are they going to comply with the ordinance? And that was one of the ambiguities built into that spec process, and that's why we have to rebid the project. Correct that kind of thing.
Right, all right.
Well, I think what we can do is, on Thursday, we'll have it as an action item...
You know what, Your Honor? Your Honor?
Just a moment, Alderman, please. That we can have it as an action item with numbers that can be amended at that time. So if we bring this same 10 to 33 percent to the table, that can always be amended, and, you know, see, and voted on at that time to stabilize it. Yeah, Alderman Cunningham, please.
Your Honor, I think we need to move on with this issue. I'm willing to concede tonight, if we put a flat rate of 15 percent, move forward, so we don't go up the... We have a ceiling on it. Everybody's happy with it. Flat rate of 15 percent. Let's move this issue forward, and from a point of who will police this? Who will police this? Right now, certified payrolls. Certified... You know what certified payrolls mean? That means you are certifying that these individuals work for you. That's something that the unions do already. So we ain't have to police anything. It's not about policing, it's about making sure that we get our fair shake on some of these contracts. Now, I thought, in committee, we had an agreement, 10 percent minimum, not to exceed 33. Now, I'm hearing words that it never was a ceiling. I'm hearing words that, "Who's gonna police it?" I'm hearing words... I never heard these kind of comments when outside contractors was getting our money. I never heard this. I never heard anything about... And we were getting certified payrolls up in engineering. Certified payrolls. That means you certify that these individuals are working on this job. We don't have to police this. So if you... I'd rather move on with this thing tonight and put it to rest. We have an ordinance, let's keep it on the books, let's get this thing started, let's stop messing around with it. Let's move. If you... Leave it at 10. I'm tired of messing with it. Leave it at 10, but put it on the books.
Okay, Alderman, well...
So move.
So move. Let's leave it on the books.
Okay, hold on. This is not an action item this evening. It will be brought to you on Thursday as an action item.
They wanna kill it anyway. Just leave it on the books. We want to die.
We had this discussion in order to do it Thursday.
We needed to be able to write what was gonna be on the agenda, so...
Yeah, just, you know...
So, any other comments? Any further comments on this one?
Yeah.
No?
Well, you know, if you... I'm telling you right now, if you give me some more time to think about it, we're gonna be talking about, let's bring on each and every... Whatever contract that comes up, let's put a number in it, not to exceed 33 percent. So I'm telling you, let's move on it tonight, while we're all in good spirits.
We can, Alderman. It has to be Thursday. So this will be an agenda, an action item on Thursday's agenda. I believe that was...
But wait a minute, hold on. But it passed committee? It passed committee, didn't it pass committee?
Yeah, we got it out of committee.
It matters not, Alderman, whether it passed committee. What matters is how it's stated on the agenda, and tonight, it is to ask for guidance. There's no true action item.
I thought, in committee, that we moved this to the floor.
Ask for guidance for a recommendation.
In committee, I thought we passed this to move it to the floor.
It's not stated right press, Sam, so we'll have to do it Thursday.
It was stated right, on the agenda, Sam.
Committee was also... The committee, I think, was also asked for guidance, I think, of him.
I thought we gave him guidance.
Okay.
No, but we did vote on it in committee.
I know we did.
We did.
I thought we moved it to the floor, but...
But since it's not on the agenda as an action...
Public Works Committee report.
We'll take action on Thursday, Alderman.
Public Works Committee report. That's what it says on the agenda.
Right, but reports do send discussion items to the city council. So, Thursday night, it will be an action item on the agenda.
Work your votes.
I believe that was the only item that was requested to be held out?
That's correct. So shall I proceed to read the items on the omnibus?
Please do.
Vote? Here is follows. Public Works Committee. Item A. Grant permission to purchase two new truck chassis through the State of Illinois Purchasing Contract. Item B. Grant permission to draft specifications and advertise for bids for the purchase of two new truck bodies. Item C. Grant permission to purchase a new street sweeper through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative. Item D. Grant permission to draft specifications and advertise for bids for the purchase of a new tree stump cutter. Item E. Grant permission to draft specifications and advertise for bids for the Public Works Uniform Contract. Moving down to the Finance Committee report, item A. Authorize and ratify use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Aircon Refrigerating and Heating, Inc., for the purpose of public works facility renewal and replacement, specifically repair of HVAC equipment and controls, in an amount not to exceed $47,440. Budget Code 307-1307-26392. Item B. Authorize the use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to standard equipment for the purpose of public works equipment and vehicle renewal and replacement, specifically street sweeper purchases, in an amount not to exceed $159,631. Budget Code 307-1307-26494. Item C. Authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Prairie Archway International Trucks, for the purpose of public works equipment and vehicle renewal and replacement, specifically snow fleet trucks purchases, in an amount not to exceed $142,252. Budget Code 307-1307-26494. Item D. Adopt an ordinance dissolving the Belvedere Mall Tax Increment Financing TIF District, as all projects have been completed and costs have been paid in the redevelopment project area. Item E. Adopt a resolution directing any surplus balance remaining in the Belvedere Mall Tax Increment Financing District Fund to be paid to the county collector for distribution to the affected taxing bodies. Item F. Adopt an ordinance dissolving the Lewis Avenue Tax Increment Financing TIF District, as all projects have been completed and costs have been paid in the redevelopment project area. Item G. Adopt a resolution directing any surplus balance remaining in the Lewis Avenue Tax Increment Financing TIF District Fund to be paid to the county collector for distribution to the affected taxing bodies. Item H. Adopt an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $31 million general obligation refunding bonds, $31 million. Series 2011 of the City of Waukegan, Lake County, Illinois, for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds. Old business. Item A. Motion by Alderman Figaro, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, that Corporation Council draft an ordinance approving the final plat of the Martin subdivision at 36175 and 36230, North Frolic Avenue, zoning calendar twenty-two seventy-seven, which was held over by Alderman Figaro at the last meeting. New business. Recommended actions by Corporation Council to approve the payroll dated November 4th, 2010, in the amount of one million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. Item B. Approve the bills dated November 15, 2010, in the amount of one million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty cents. Also, item C, a motion to receive the treasurer's report. Moving down to ordinance and resolutions. Item 11. That an ordinance be passed to reflect one-way stops at westbound Highland Avenue at New York Street and at eastbound Grove Avenue at Westmoreland Avenue. The ordinance be passed approving the map amendment for outlets NOP and Q of the Fields of Cambridge subdivision from R5 Limited General Residence to CR Conservation Recreation zoning calendar twenty-three oh one. Item C. The approval, motion approve the map amendment for outlet M of the Fields of Cambridge subdivision from R5 Limited General Residence to CR Conservation Recreation zoning calendar twenty-three oh two. Item D. Motion approve the text amendment allowing tattoo studio with art gallery as a conditional use in the B5 Central Service District as zoning calendar twenty-three oh three. And lastly, motion approve the conditional use permit for a tattoo studio with art gallery at 114 South Genesee Street. That would be zoning calendar twenty-three oh four. On behalf of the charity entertained, a motion to pass and approve all of those items.
Alderman Moizio, motion by Alderman Moizio, seconded by Alderman Needham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Figaro.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. What we'll do next is move to the presentation by Treasurer John Schwab. Following that, we will go into Alderman's time, after which we will, excuse me.
What about?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Let's do John's presentation first.
Sure.
Yeah. And following that, we will do communications and the items under that, then Alderman's time. And then we have a rather lengthy executive session this evening. So following Alderman's time, we will go into that. For all extent, intent and purposes, the meeting is over at that point. We will come back out of executive session, go into regular session and adjourn for the evening. So Treasurer Dr. John Schwab.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, in May of 2009, when I came into office, shortly discovered that we were three years behind in completing and filing municipal audits. I obtained a letter of remediation between the then Finance Director and the auditors. I was told in July 2006 that the annual report of 2006 was filed. As you can see in the letter, the, the yellow copy on top of the papers I gave you, we got a letter from Daniel Hines, the State Controller, saying that was not filed. And I had no way of, at the time, of knowing if that information was true from our Finance Director. We received this letter in, in August. As you realize, we have a different Finance Director. We have different auditors. And I'm happy to report that the second page that you see was the submission of the 2000, and that's what we should've had, is a confirmation in the future. You'll be required either of myself or of the Finance Director to give you, and to give you a copy of, the confirmation of submission of any given, of any given year. I did not know that this was available, required, until the August letter came to me and I found out what the proper way of doing it. The following page is submission of '07. The next page is '08, and the last is '09. I am very, very happy to report that, as maybe some of you have seen published in the Waukegan News Sun on 10/25 of this year, the last requirement of reporting of audits, et cetera, was completed. And at that time, we were in compliance at 10/25 of this year. And we have every expectation to hopefully present the latest audit at the second city council meeting in December. Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you, Treasurer. Appreciate that. And congratulations on all the hard work that.
And if I may, okay, if I may, I'm gonna thank everybody that helped. I mean, everybody in the Finance Department. So Tina Smigelski, Joan Westphal, Susan Coletta, Kevin Russo, Jean Curry, Liz Martinez, Mary Anne Avalos, Stacy Schwartz, and of course, the Deputy Treasurer Cindy Te Camp, all contributed to half the working, a lot of extra, pulling extra files and stopping with the, the daily work to get the correct information to our auditors to get caught up. And I want to thank all of them.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sure that everybody here is in gratitude for all the hard work as well. I'd ask for a round of applause, but I'd have to hit the table, but go ahead, because they deserve it.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions or anything regarding the, the report just given? Seeing none presented, we will then move on to communications. Item A. Required reporting to municipality by Waukegan Fire Pension Board. Who's representing the Waukegan Fire Pension Board this evening? Would you please step forward to the podium and give your presentation, please? I should say, introduce yourselves first, then give your presentations.
Is there a chance we take it as order like police first, so they know?
No. No, it's fine. Whatever works. That's fine.
Yeah. So this would be item B, I believe, the police.
Okay, this will be required reporting to municipality, municipality by Waukegan Police Pension Board. And representing them this evening is Tina Smigelski.
Yes, Mr. Murlock was able to attend tonight due to a family obligation, and he requested that I present the report on behalf of the pension board, which I'm happy to do so. And this is actually an annual requirement that the pension boards are supposed to report to the city on an annual basis prior to the city taking action on a levy ordinance. So you all should've received a packet from me. It would've had a memo on the front. And if you flip about five pages in, you'll see correspondence from Tepfer Consulting Group addressed to me. And the first report is the police pension fund report. Now, this entire report is the actuarial calculations. But the second, second page in is the required reporting to municipality by the pension board. And the numbers are actually calculated as of May 1st, 2009, but are applicable to the April 30th, 2010 financial statement. So the pension calculations are always one year in arrears for financial reporting purposes, and actually two years in arrears for tax levy purposes. And, and that's normal course of business. For the police pension board, the total asset market value was forty-eight million with the actuarial value of fifty-three million. They do, do a multi-year assumption on that. For the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2009, employee participants contributed 1.2 million, and the employer, the City of Waukegan, contributed 5.9 or 6 million dollars. The required amount for the subsequent fiscal year to pay all of the pensions and other obligations will be 5.3 million dollars. But to meet the annual requirements to bring the fund to a sufficient funding level will be 7.2 million. In the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2009, an investment return was assumed of seven percent, which is normal. However, there was a negative thirteen point forty-four investment loss. Therefore, the net income received from investments was a negative 7.6 million dollars for the fiscal year. The number of active employees that are contributing to the fund presently are 159. We have annuities receiving a regular pension of 76, recipients receiving a disability pension of 24, and survivors and/or children in receipt of benefits of 15. And that concludes the report to you this evening. You want me to do? Okay.
Tina, could you do us a favor and just explain very quickly skip reporting?
Uh, skip, skip year valuation?
Skip year valuation, right.
Okay. So on an annual basis, by state statute, the pension boards are required to receive an actuarial assessment on an annual basis and file that with the Department of Insurance. That's pretty much, that's all the statute says. There's different methodologies to calculate actuarial assumptions. There's three things that make up funding for a pension fund. There's employee contributions, which are, as the mayor explained earlier in his comments, set by state statute. There's investment earnings on the assets within the fund. And then there's the employer contribution rate. So one of the things that the actuarial assessment does on an annual basis is determines what the subsequent employer contribution will be on a lump sum basis. And usually, that is affected through a property tax levy at the municipal level. Usually, what will happen is on April 30th, payroll will run all of the data out of the payroll system on the active participants, date of birth, date of hire, and current payroll. And that will be provided to an actuary, along with other things such as retirees, survivors. And then they'll use several factors, including mortality rates, disability rates, and other assumptions. A skip year valuation is where you take prior year data and you don't necessarily threw it up with the current payroll information. The City of Waukegan has done skip year valuations, meaning they've just taken prior year data and compounded those numbers. The last full valuation done was April 30th, 2007, before this valuation was done this
Okay, thank you. Now, the Fire Pension Board wants you to report for them, or?
That's fine.
You do.
Okay.
You guys get on television.
No.
No? Okay. All right, then we will have the pension reporting to the municipality by the Waukegan Fire Pension Board, being presented by Tina Smigelski. Did somebody say something?
Yes, Your Honor.
Alderman Cunningham?
I, I guess I've a, Tina, you said four of 2007. Is that for fire or for police?
Both.
So the four of 2007 was the last time we.
A last, prior to this report?
Yes.
The last full valuation was done in 2007.
And two, and that's for both pension boards?
Correct.
All right.
Police and Fire, IMRF, which is your non-sworn pension program here, is handled through IMRF. They hire actuaries on a statewide level.
Okay.
Tina, just real quickly, address the, our present situation with our actuarial firm.
The prior actuary exited the business. And after some conversations, I would say probably in the fall or winter, with the pension boards, the pension boards went through an RFP process with some assistance from the Finance Department. And at that point in time, it was decided that it would make better business practices for the pension boards to, in fact, be the ones to retain the actuary, to maintain that independence and kind of division between the city and the pension boards. So there were two primary firms that presented proposals. Timothy Sharp's firm and then Tepfer Consulting, both provided proposals. And both pension boards decided independently to retain Tepfer Consulting Group. They are one of the best police and fire and OPEP, other post-employment benefit actuary groups, not only in the state of Illinois, but nationally. And they attend many, Alderman Newsom's on the pension board, but art is a fixture at pension training and other kinds of investment and post, post-retirement training seminars. So we got probably the best actuary in the state now doing these services for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Your Honor, I, I do have a couple of questions, because I guess I'm a little confused as to.
Tina, did you actually give your final report on the fire?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Do you want to continue to ask questions, or do you want her to present first?
Well, I, I guess, will, the questions that I'm gonna ask, will they, will they kinda be the same thing as, will they correlate with each other, I'm assuming?
I, I don't know what you're gonna.
All right. Well, then why don't you finish your report?
Okay. The Fire Pension Report's a little further into the documents that I gave to you. It has the same cover sheet essentially from Mr. Tepfer. For the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2009, again, which is related to our April 30th, 2010 financial statements, and will impact the 2010 levy, the total asset value, market value of the Fire Pension is thirty-nine million dollars, and the actuarial value of those is forty-one, or forty-three million. The receipts received during the fiscal year from active participants, the employees, was eight hundred and seventy thousand, with the city's employer contributions being 4.2 million. In order to pay all the pensions and other obligations in the subsequent fiscal year, that will require a 4.4 million dollar employer contribution to meet requirements in addition to pulling the funding up to an acceptable level will be a 5 million dollar obligation. For the fiscal year ending 2009, the assumed investment return was seven percent. However, the actual investment turn was negative 11.34 percent, resulting in losses of 4.7 million dollars. We currently have 62 annuities receiving regular pensions, 26 receiving a disability pension, and 25 survivors and children that are currently in receipt of benefits. And that concludes the report for the Fire Pension Fund.
Thank you. Alderman Cunningham first, and then Alderman Moizio.
Now, I, I want to get back to the skip year, just so I fully understand what a skip year is. A skip year means, and I'm somewhat familiar with that, you take, you use last year's actual numbers, skip the following year, and then make an assumption on what it's going to be. That's how claims are done.
Correct.
Okay. Now, per your report, 2000, April 30, 2007, we did not get another report until 2010.
There is not a full, we received reports. They were not full valuations. So they were skip year valuations.
So the evaluation helps, does it help or hurt? What does that do from an evaluation standpoint? What, what do you?
A full valuation is a more accurate way to calculate the employer contribution and the benefits due to participants in the fund. Skip year valuations are less expensive, but don't provide as accurate figures as a full valuation would.
And.
So it's been two years since we've had a full valuation.
Two years. And from a response, who is responsible to make sure those evaluations are done? Who, what level? Is it the city's responsibility, the treasurer, or the pension? Who?
All of the above.
All of the above? Was there?
I mean, it's, it's a statutory requirement. And Department of Insurance at the state level is the one that, you know, puts it out there that they would do the audits and come in and do the compliance. And I believe the City of Waukegan's been audited by the Department of Insurance in the past. That would've been an audit primarily run through the treasurer's office. The treasurer kind of serves an oversight role of the pension funds. And the council and the mayor have a couple of appointments that they make to the pension board. The pension board also elects from its active members, and I believe retirees as well. So, you know, the, the responsibility to ensure that the actuarial assumptions are done on an annual basis is really a shared responsibility between the treasurer's office, the pension board, and then the city representatives that, you know, work. You shouldn't be able to have your audit complete without your actuarial report done. So it's kind of a chicken and an egg situation. So, you know, perhaps with financial audits falling in arrears, that may be why full valuations weren't being performed at the same time. I can't really speak to what was going on before I got here in that regard.
Okay. And I'm assuming the pension board people can?
I'm not.
I'm assuming the pension board people can speak to what, what was going on prior to.
If you're not excited.
No, I, I, we'll, we'll get to you. My, my next question will be, Tina, the shortfall, the shortfall of those, of these monies that needs to be made up in order to come to state standards? Are, are you going to be recommending to us what we should be do from a state standard, or what we need to be in order to be at a solvency standpoint?
Uh, well, we're solvent.
We're solvent?
We're solvent.
Okay.
I don't want to imply that we're not. The funds are currently 45 percent funded for police and 50 percent funded for fire, which is categorized as relatively poor by state standards. There's two different ways that you can fund from the employer's perspective. You can do the annual required contribution, which is called the ARC, and that's what you have to fund. If you neglect to fund that, you still have to record that to your financial statements and create the liability on your books. Then there is the actuarial recommended amount, which takes into account the ARC, or the annual required contribution, and also funding sufficient to get you to a more stable funding mechanism. What I prepared for your packet tonight was the actuarial recommended funding amount, which is 7.8 million dollars for police and 5.2 or 3 for fire. The actuarial, the ARC amount is lower, that's 5.7 for police and 4 million for fire. So the recommendation from the actuary and the recommendation that staff presented to you tonight in the memorandum was the actuarial recommendation that is higher than the ARC, or the annual required contribution amount.
And is there a recommendation that you give to council, or we just need to kind of roll the dice?
As staff, we would concur with the actuary's recommendation, but I under, I understand that property taxes are.
Whoa.
A limited resource. So if council would like to direct me to look at some other scenarios that would use the ARC amount instead of the actuarial recommendation, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay, let me, let me get this right. So this 5 million or 7 million dollars that we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
That comes from the pension board, it don't come from the city, does it?
That comes from the actuary, who is independent from the city and is retained by the pension board.
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear.
Oh, the funding?
Who, who's going to pay?
The city.
And how do you do that?
Whoa, 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 whoa. Excuse me.
It's the city's employer contribution. The City of Waukegan has funded that through property taxes. Other municipalities that have sufficient fund reserves can use other mechanisms for that. We do. We do not have fund reserves to allow us the flexibility to tap other resources to make this funding obligation.
Okay.
So this would be put onto the property tax as part of the 2010 levy, which would impact the 2011, 2012 budget.
Okay.
But it would be the employer's contribution.
All right, now, what, and this, these, these, these numbers are coming from, coming from the investment, pension fund investments, doing, wasn't, didn't do as projected?
Mm-hmm.
And they're coming from where else?
Payroll-
The shortfalls are coming from investments that wasn't, didn't pan out the way we want them to, or they want them to, and considering the stock market, we do understand that.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and that's another question, but where else did the shortfall come from? The short-
Well, the losses were significant. We lost, not we lost, I mean, in the pension fund, in the police pension fund, $7.6 million. It was a negative 14%, and in fire, it was four, it was a negative 11%, which is 4.7 million. So a large portion of this dramatic increase in both the ARC as well as the recommended amount is related to losses in 2009. There's also factors that go into that, which would be payroll increases, you know, we have pension benefits that are robust, and because of the skip year valuations, it's not clear that all of the nuances that go into police and fire pension obligations, such as disability pensions, mortality rates, and survivor benefits, would have been fully taken into account. So the skip year valuations didn't help, but payroll increases and market losses are probably the largest contributors to this increase.
But if I'm not mistaken, even though we had a skip year valuation, the formula should have already included those, those items that you talked about?
They didn't necessarily account for what the payroll increases actually were in those years, they just used factors based on prior year data.
Okay. So, going forward, particularly since, and from an investment standpoint, where are we now, maybe they can answer this, I mean, the pension folks, where are we now from an investment standpoint of trying to recoup, or is your strategy has changed from the investment? Because I know typically with those pensions, some is heavily on bonds, and most of it's kind of heavily on, on, you know, fluctuation of the stock market. Where are they now from a, from a investment standpoint of trying to, you know, come back to that?
I can't really speak to that. I know that there's statutory limitations on the types of investments that a pension board can use, but I don't know if you're comfortable speaking to that tonight, or we can always, you know, report back, okay?
Tina, before you, before you swap out there, do, just give us a quick overview. We have the kind of three options that have been presented. Give us an overview of what the deficit would be on option, on each of the options if, if chosen.
Okay, in the- In the memorandum that I provided to you on the fourth page, what, what we did here was we took the current, the 2009 tax levy, which is applicable to this fiscal year, and we broke it down by the four primary sources that benefit, the library, corporate, which is the general fund, fire pension and police pension with a subtotal, and then under that, we had bonds. The first alternative would be, which is not the staff recommended alternative, the first alternative would be to keep the property tax levy total dollar amount flat over the prior year extension. Because the city of Waukegan is a home rule entity, we do not levy by a rate like school districts or park districts do. We actually levy a flat dollar amount, and the rate is calculated later by the county. If we were to keep the tax levy flat over the prior year, not inclusive of bonds, and levied the entire actuarial recommendation for police and fire pension funds, the corporate share of the levy would go down 53%. It would go from 9 million down to 4 million, and the library levy would go from 3.8 million down to 1.1 million, again, a 53% decline. Then when you add the bonded debt service on to that, the bonded debt service is going from 6.7 million to $10 million, in part because the working cash bonds that were issued, the $30 million in working cash bonds that we issued in order to afford the city some liquidity about a year ago, only interest was payable last year, and we'll have principal and interest due this coming year, the total tax levy would go up 13% overall. Alternative two would be a goal to have the levy not inclusive of bonds stay at the 5% or lower threshold. You want me to continue?
Well, what I was really looking for, I think, because we've kind of jumped over into item C-
Okay.
Right now, but really was just the solid deficit numbers that came out of other choices. What, what were they, 5 million out of, uh, two, 15 million out of one, something along those lines?
So you mean, the amount of the, the amount the corporate levy would go down?
What's, what's, what's the spread between what we would have coming in and what would be, what we need for operating?
Well, deficit's kind of in the eye of the beholder, so-
Okay.
You know, the property tax levy is only one revenue source that goes into the general fund. The current year's budget was adopted and it was balanced for the general fund, however, that was made up of $5 million of one-time transfers in. So we have to keep that in account. If everything stayed exactly the same next year as far as expenditures, we have a $5 million issue that we need to address. But with the tax levies, if we keep the dollar amount of the levy the same, the general fund will see a decline in property tax revenues of $5 million. If we only bring the property taxes up 5%, we'll see a decline of $4 million in the general fund, and, or the other alternative would be to keep the dollar amount the same, but then you're looking at a double-digit increase, double-digit percent increase in the property tax levy. Again, this assumption was done with the actuarial recommendation of the police and fire pension amounts.
Okay, all right. I think, one more, Sam, and then we'll go to Greg, please.
Tina, from a tax rate, what are we looking at, a worst-case scenario of us and our tax rate? Let me help you out a little bit better. Using the, the auditors, the audits numbers, what would be our worst-case scenario?
Using the, using the current year's EAV, which the county does not have the 2010 EAV numbers out, they've sent out correspondence saying to not ask them for it, they'll let us know when they have it. So this is assuming that EAV stays the same, which is probably not necessarily going to be the case. But assuming that EAV stayed the same, worst-case scenario, I'm assuming you're talking alternative number three?
Yes.
Because bear in mind, we are home rules, so the levy could go up even more than this. But assuming alternative three that was presented to you tonight, the rate would go from $1.64 to $2.29.
Thank you.
Okay. Greg?
It was answered. Police pension lost 14% in investments, and fire pension lost 11% in investments, and the net comes back on the taxpayer.
Correct.
My question, and that's not, I'm sure of a lot of pension plans around the country, who's investing this money? So I mean, it's not, it's not anybody sitting in this room I was. I, you know, I mean, I, it just, it just, I mean, it bothers me that we have, that we have investments that, that's not, you know?
Yeah, you know what, why don't we have one of the members from the fire pension board step up and let them talk to you a little bit more about that nuts and bolts sort of thing?
Steve Carlson, Jeff Welch, we're firefighters elected by the firefighters. I'm president of the fire pension fund, Jeff's the secretary. Edie Newsom and Larry Tempeth are also on the pension fund. Your, your question, who's investing? We do have investment managers, a manager that oversees that for us, very reputable. I think we did better than our benchmarks last year, even though we did lose that 11%.
Was that, was that pretty common for police and fire pensions to lose all the investments? I mean, I know the stock market went crap, or was that pretty common for most municipalities to lose that much money in police and fire pension investments?
They actually performed worse. We were top 95% of the pile of, of fire pension fund. I can't, I can't speak for police, I'm only for fire. We were 95% top for fire pension fund. Yeah, we lost a lot of money, but a lot of people lost a lot more than we did. We did extremely well through this, and we actually have, we recovered all of that money back.
You what?
I mean, that loss, but-
All the money that we lost, we now have, we've made that back now.
So 11% that was lost in investment, we've made that, we're back up to zero, maybe a little bit, up at a zero.
Okay.
Just for a note, I mean, our total pension fund right now, I think we're like at 44 million in our pension fund. That's back to the way it was before all these problems happened.
Okay.
Yes.
Greg, thank you. Thanks, gentlemen. Do we have any other questions before-
Your Honor, Your Honor, hold on a second.
Yes, Sam.
I guess my, my question from a strategy standpoint, I know you, it's customary that you do skip auditing, considering these times, and I don't think we've seen the worst of these times, is there a new strategy that you're going to be implementing from that pension board that would help us, you know, look, give us a better estimate of what can potentially happen in the future? Is there new strategies you guys are thinking about doing, or?
You know, the, the skip year valuation is performed by the actuary, and it's his recommendation just to do a full-year evaluation, then skip year, full-year, skip year. That doesn't necessarily affect that much how much we're making. The, the problem with, with the pension fund is not so much paying the benefits. We have about 115 guys receiving benefits, the average person that we're paying out is under $39,000. Nothing lavish, nothing extravagant, that's all it is. The problem comes in with paying the unfunded liability, and that problem was created back in 1993, when the state legislator, legislature changed the way they figured out how they're going to pay for that. If you compare it to your mortgage, you put 20% down, you got to pay 80%, you pay 1,500 a month every month for 30 years. That's called level dollar. We were doing that, 1993, the legislature changed that, so that you didn't have to make that 1,500 a month mortgage payment, you made a hundred dollar a month mortgage payment. Then the next month was two, then five, then seven, and then, so for a long time, we paid a lot less, but we're still meeting our actuarial requirements. The problem is, over time, eventually you get to that 1,500 a month, then it's 17, then it's 18, then it's 2,000, then it's 2,500, then it's 5 grand, and now it's like, how do we pay for this?
It puts you on a balloon tainer.
Exactly, that's exactly what that law change did in 1993. What we need to do, and we agree with the new, with the Sun-Times, that there does need to be some reform. The solution for prom, switch back to level dollar funding, make that same payment every year for a regular amount of years. The second part, make it a 30-year rolling amortization period. The third part is loosen up the, the regulations we have on our investments. We're allowed, our funds are large enough that we could put 35% in individual stocks, 10% in mutual funds, the other 55% has to be in bonds, and only government bonds, no corporate bonds. Where our actuarial rate of return is 7%. It's hard to get 7% with that, with that percentage makeup.
Government bonds it is.
We, we need the legislature to loosen up the restrictions a little bit, give us a better opportunity to make that 7%. And then the last one is to, for communities that haven't made their pension contributions, to make those contributions. That hasn't been a problem here, and it has been in other communities. The other thing is, we might look at removing the requirement of being 100% funded at the end of that amortization period. Being 100% funded means that you've got all the money in the fund right now to be every pension obligation for every member of the guys working now, and all the guys that are currently retired. It's, it's probably unnecessary. If we had like a 90% amorti, or 90% funded, we got 90% of the money that we need, because that would be more reasonable. We don't necessarily need the money right now for a guy that we hire, that we hire tomorrow. So if we implement those kinds of things, that'll go a long way towards solving the long-term problem. Now, I realize we got some money issues right now, and that doesn't affect that, but going forward, that's the solution. A two-tiered system doesn't solve the problem. We got to change the way we pay for the unfunded liabilities. We can pay for the pensions, we're just, we need to figure out a better way to pay for the unfunded liabilities.
Okay, thanks, guys. Appreciate it. You know, we've kind of dipped into a little bit unintentionally into item C, kind of dragged them all together somewhat, but I'd like to have Corporation Counsel, there's something with this regarding our Thursday special, special session, is, is, there'll be more items added to that beyond just the, the hiring ordinance and the CLC issue. So Corporation Counsel would like to run through a cup, something with you very quickly before we go any further here.
Referencing the memorandum from the Finance Department, alternative one could simply be done without a public hearing, as could alternative two. We're entitled to go up 5% without holding any kind of a hearing. We've been doing that just sort of automatically, as a lot of governmental bodies do over the years. However, alternative three would require us to have a full-blown hearing and take certain steps preceding it. In order to preserve our ability to choose alternative three or any levy increase above 5%, we have to go through the following steps. This coming Thursday at our special meeting, the council will have to determine the amount of the probable levy for the coming year. If that determination of a probable levy is in excess of the 5% allowable bump without a hearing, we then have to publish notice of a hearing and hold what's called a truth in taxation hearing. Schedule for that would be, the notice would be published the week of December 6th. On December 20th, we would have two things. First, we would have a truth in taxation public hearing, and then we would vote at the city council meeting immediately thereafter on what the levy will be. That then has to be filed with the county clerk by the last Tuesday in December. So in order to meet these requirements in terms of scheduling, we do have to, this Thursday, decide what the probable levy will be. We cannot wait till the following normal city council meeting. It gets us too tightly compressed to comply with the statutory scheme. So, on the basis of that, I just want to let you know that on Thursday night, whatever other subjects will be on the agenda in the special meeting, this subject will be, and the council will be asked to vote for a specific dollar amount of a probable levy. That is the amount then that will be put in the truth in taxation notice, if it's beyond the 5%. At the actual, after the public hearing, the council could levy a less, less of a percentage or number than, than what had been, sort of the outer limits set by the probable levy. But if you want to go over that probable levy, it becomes a dicey situation. There are potential cures, but basically with the time period in question, we should publish a notice that includes the amount of probable levy that would give us leeway when we vote on the 20th to make the appropriate decision that the council determines regarding the amount of the tax levy for this coming year.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, let's officially move under, under communications to item C, the 2010 tax levy. I think a lot of the questions have been asked, a lot of information's probably been offered. Do we have any further questions or comments regarding item C? And if you have any questions, you can always call into Finance and, and inquire individually, and obviously if we needed to get together to speak, we can speak a couple at a time so we don't violate the Open Meetings Act if you feel that's, and I wouldn't be surprised if you did feel that was necessary. So, given that, then item C, I will consider concluded for the evening, and we will then move on to, I believe, Alderman's time. And, Mr. Clerk?
Alderman Figaro, pass. Alderman Newsom?
Yes, I'd just like to wish everyone a-
Yes, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, because I think this is probably our last meeting before Thanksgiving. So, my prayer is that everyone has a blessed Thanksgiving.
Alderman Needham?
Briefly, I'm sure most of you know the passing of former building commissioner and Alderman Larry Dixon. Services were today. Fine man, did a great job. And with that being said, I was wondering if we could honor him with a resolution for his accomplishments and present it to his family. Alderman Tempest was a very good friend of his, so I'm sure whenever we do that, he'd like to be here. I think he's just gone for one meeting, but.
Absolutely.
We'll do that. Put on the agenda for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Alderman Larson?
Thank you. I also want to wish all of you and all of you at home who may check this meeting, check in on this meeting, a happy Thanksgiving. We truly have a lot to be thankful for. This last year has had its ups and downs, but I see better things on the horizon for Waukegan, particularly, you know, those many, many, many volunteers that Waukegan counts on to make our town a little bit better for the rest of us. And that's a reminder, very subtly, to make sure you come down and enjoy the holiday fest coming up on December fourth. Plenty to do for the kids and the adults. There's cocoa, there's, you know, displays, there's, you know, all the stores will be open for Christmas shopping. Please patronize the Waukegan businesses downtown that open their doors to all of you from not only Waukegan but surrounding communities. Thank you very much.
Alderman Rivera?
I also want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I just want to let everyone know, it's, it's not always, everything's not always doom and gloom. You know, we have a lot of good things that are going to be happening in the city. So, keep the faith, please. Also, I want to mention, we lost another great Waukeganite. He was also one of our Lion Club members, Walt Edwards, Walter Edwards. I believe he was finance director under the Sabanjan administration, if I'm not mistaken. But anyways, Walt passed away Sunday morning, and his services will be over here at the First Methodist on this Wednesday, coming up from nine to ten is the wake, and then after that will be his services. So, he was a great man, no question about it, did a lot of great things. I don't know if everyone knows Betty, his wife, too, was very nice. But Walter Edwards, a good, good man. Fortunately, he passed away. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham?
I too want to wish everyone in the city of Waukegan a happy Thanksgiving. And I like to echo what Alderman Larson said about volunteers. I've had the distinct pleasure of watching volunteers throughout this year, and the sacrifices they make and the big hearts that they have in trying to make other people's lives better. I just want to let everyone know that, you know, when you see a volunteer out there doing things, they're doing things because they, they want to do this. This is just something in their heart and their soul. So, I want a big shout-out to them, but happy Thanksgiving, not only to the citizens of Waukegan, but to my colleagues on council floor, can, hope you and your families have a pleasant Thanksgiving. And did, who liked the Bears win, right? Yeah. All right, thank you, your honor.
Alderman Conken?
Just along with everybody else, be aware that Thanksgiving is probably one of the biggest travel days of the year, so make sure you get to where you're going safely, enjoy your holiday, and get back. Thank you.
Alderman Wazell?
Yeah, real quick, when we had a meeting with, Mike Higbee was here, Alderman Rivera brought a point. I'd never thought of it before, but it was very, I think we need to think about it, I think about it hard. He said, "How can the Farmington Square happen? Nothing else has happened." And I'll leave you with a quote from Tom Sessie. "There's far more danger in a public monopoly than there is a private monopoly. For when government goes into business, it can always shift its losses to the taxpayer. Government never really goes into business where it never makes ends meet, and that is the first requisite of business. It just mixes a little business with a lot of politics, and no one ever gets a chance to find out what is actually going on." Tom Sessie.
Thank you. I have two quick things I'd like to add, and then we're going to go into our executive session. One is, I was contacted by a teacher at Thomas Jefferson Junior High, who is part of a new program that District Sixty began, and they got the program going, they got everybody enrolled, and they, everybody showed up for class and realized that they hadn't put any money in for textbooks. So, we've been trying to help her raise about forty-five hundred dollars to acquire textbooks for this program, and we've got about halfway there. So, if anybody knows of, or anybody's interested in helping make a donation, you can do it through me to the teacher, who will then use the funds to acquire the textbooks. And this is not a new story, this is old for District Sixty. We've been kind of having and hearing things about this for a while, about lack of textbooks and things. But this is one of the opportunities where we might be able to make a difference as individuals. So, that's just something I wanted to toss out there. Yes?
Your honor, can I make one more comment?
Yes.
Just something to keep in mind, since the times have been so hard this year, the Marine Corps Reserves Toys for Tots program is underway. And please, if you have time and a little extra time stop, pick up a toy, please drop it off with them. So, some, every child gets a toy this Christmas. Thank you, thank you, your honor.
Yeah, right, 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 just a moment. Right, right, okay. We, you know, Sam just reminded me of something, too, that every year we have employees from the city of Waukegan that go to families with Christmas gifts that they get from local businesses, furniture, clothing, food, a, a wide array of items. And Wendy Beschel, who is our licensing director, has been heading this up for a few years. And, you know, last year, I, you may remember, I made some comments a few weeks back about the fact that we went to a, a home where we met a woman and her family, and brought a couch up to their apartment, and the children were just so absolutely thrilled to see that. And unfortunately, that was, she was the victim of a, of a shooting, a random shooting here in Waukegan and lost her life. So, you never know when you reach out to people, you know, who you're going to make contact with, who you're, you're going to be able to help, who you're going to be able to, to make sure that that last Christmas together, or the first Christmas together as a family, is something that they'll treasure and remember for the rest of their lives. So, if you have any, you know, desire to help out, if you have anything you'd like to contribute, you can contact Wendy here at the city of Waukegan. She is listed under the licensing director. I don't have her extension, but you can always just call through to my office, five nine nine twenty-five-ten, and we can forward you over to Wendy, and you can give her the information in regards to, you know, how you'd like to assist. So, with that, I will take a motion. One more, one more. Settlement of claims, got it, okay. Okay, I'm just making sure that when I make the motion for going to executive session, we have the entire laundry list of things. I will take a motion to go into executive session for pending and imminent litigation, real estate, real estate transactions and settlement of claims. Motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Needham. All in favor? Opposed, eyes have it. So, in essence, ladies and gentlemen, this concludes this evening's meeting. When we come back out, we will just go back into regular session and adjourn for the evening then. Well, we will take a five-minute recess between now and the start of the meeting, of the executive session. We'll just run. You can, you can, you want to just write it down? Okay, motion to go back in, oh, call, I'm sorry, yes, roll call, please.
Here, for the air.
Alderman Figueroa, Alvin Newsom, Alderman Needham, Alderman Larson, Alderman Rivera.
Here.
Alderman Cunningham.
We're not back in yet.
Alderman Wazell.
President, okay, motion to go back into regular session by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Conken. All in favor? Eyes have it. Motion to adjourn by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Needham. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, lady and gentleman.